To open the, uh, the meeting.
Moved.
Adam Savino, second.
Second.
I think it was Mike, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Welcome. Uh, welcome to our, uh, to our, uh, school board meeting of, uh, August, August 20th, 2020. Um, as you can imagine, within the last, uh, within the last 30 days since we've spoken, there's been unprecedented, uh, amounts of, uh, amounts of work being done in order to ensure that, uh, that we're getting back to our, uh, getting back to school, our reopening plan, our assistant superintendents and superintendents have been working tirelessly along with, uh, with members of the, uh, the community and support staff in, uh, in developing the reentry plan, which I'm sure that, uh, we've had some wonderful, um, opportunities with, uh, with the forums, uh, that the, uh, that the public joined in. And thank you very much for, uh, joining those. And also I, I think it's been wonderful that the superintendent, uh, the spotlight has been extremely popular and very, very informative. And I've actually gotten a lot of comments, uh, on the positive side, uh, for, uh, for Anthony and his, uh, and Eric on their, uh, on their spotlights and, uh, and, uh, notably their masks. I think the, uh, the masks are actually, uh, uh, I think Eric, uh, Eric actually sleeps with his mask on. And, uh, and Anthony's done a great job. And of course, our superintendent is also celebrating the birth of his grandson and, uh, and we're, we're absolutely thrilled to death for him and, uh, uh, and, uh, and enjoy everything that he does, uh, for us and our, for, for the community. So with that said, could we please stand and, uh, and all stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I will, uh, I will, uh, it's my pleasure to be taking over right now. Our superintendent schools and, uh, and, uh, and new grandfather, Mr. Anthony DeCarlo. Anthony?
Thank you, President Mangan, for your kind words. And thank you to the entire community for all their kind thoughts. Uh, it's very much appreciated by my wife and I, my entire family. And that's what makes Mayapac such a special place to live and reside. So thank you so very much. It's with great pleasure that I, uh, introduce our assistant superintendent for human resources, Deborah Legato, who'll have a, uh, introduction to the board and the community tonight on a special education administrator hire. Ms. Legato?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, board members. Welcome, Megan. Last, uh, board map and board meeting, we introduced a new, new assistant principal and a new treasurer to you. And I'm really happy to introduce Megan Sullivan, who will be our new K-12 special education administrator. Megan comes from Port Jervis, uh, where she serves as the director of pupil personnel services since 2016. She was prior to that an assistant principal in Arlington and a special education improvement specialist with Capital Bosse's. So she has her Bachelor of Science in Special Ed from Geneseo and graduated with a Masters of School Administration from SUNY Albany. So we're really, really happy to have you here, Megan. Welcome. She'll be responsible for most of our, all of our out of district placements as well as acting as the full school principal. Welcome.
Good to be here.
If anybody has any questions or wants to, want to say a few words, Megan, please feel free.
Okay. Uh, well, I'm very, very excited to be joining Mayapac, especially in this really interesting time. So it'll certainly be a learning experience for all of us. And, uh, I think it'll be a great opportunity for me to get to know everybody in central office and the board and my, uh, peers as administrators. So I'm really looking forward to it. And September 21st can't come soon enough.
Yes, we think so too, Megan. So if we all make it to that.
Yes, yes. Yeah, there's that caveat. Yes.
That's it.
Megan, welcome to the team. Uh, it is, uh, it's truly, uh, we're very blessed to have you, uh, joining our community and, uh, can't wait for you to get started. Uh, you know, obviously the sooner the better. So, uh, let's, uh, let's continue to stay. We certainly look forward to seeing you, uh, very soon on campus. So welcome.
You'll be very happy here, Megan.
Yes, yes. Oh, I know.
Very good. Okay, um, again, Megan, welcome to the, okay, so.
Thank you.
A week.
So, uh, but, uh, go ahead, uh.
No, I, I didn't know if Megan was going to stay for the meeting or is she? Cause you could, you don't have to stay for the meeting.
All right. I do have a son who needs to be picked up at work, so.
I'm sure you have lots of things to do this evening, but thank you. Thank you very much for joining us. And, um, it's really a pleasure meeting you and introducing you to the board tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon. All right. Yes, absolutely.
All right. Very good. Thank you very, very much. Uh, Deborah, is that, uh, what else do we have, Deborah?
I have nothing else.
Okay. Okay. So we're going to move on to, uh, communications. Uh, right now I have, um, uh, comments, agenda items only. Do we have any, uh, comments, uh, on the agenda items only?
No comments, no comments on the agenda.
Well, yeah, it doesn't seem like we have any comments on the agenda, on tonight's agenda. So what I would like to do right now, if you don't mind, I would like to, uh, to, um, motion to accept the, um, accept the warrants. Can I get a motion to accept the warrants for July 2020? Adam Savino, second.
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
May I also get, hi Ray, may I also get a, uh, a motion to accept the treasurer's report for June, uh, 2020? Motion, please.
So moved.
Ray, second. Adam, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Okay. We have the work session meeting minutes of July 21st, 2020. A motion, please, to accept.
So moved.
Tanner, thank you. All, um, uh, second.
Second.
Thank you, Michael. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. And then, uh, finally, our regular board of education meeting minutes of July 23rd, uh, 2020. Can I get a motion, please, to accept?
So moved.
Adam, uh, second on Larry. Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. It was, it's without, uh, further ado that I now present to you, uh, once again, our superintendent of schools for his superintendent report, Mr. Anthony DeCarlo.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President Mangan. And to, uh, to, uh, everybody that's out there and, and watching this, I, I just want to take this opportunity and I want to echo what, uh, President Mangan said. The, the amount of work that's gone into getting ready for school come the next, uh, couple of weeks, um, by everybody, specifically, especially the, the cabinet, Mr. Tremblay, Dr. Stowell, um, Ms. Legato and Ms. Clohesi, along with the leadership team, the principals, the assistant principals, really, um, working very, very hard over the last two months in preparation for our, both our reopening plan and our mitigation plan. I can't thank them enough. And then I want to also thank, you know, the community, our staff, our teachers at large. We've had a number of town hall meetings and, and union meetings and discussions on, and what this looks like. And we all know, everybody, that this is something that we've never anticipated would ever have to happen. And, um, what's really important about this is it's evolving from day to day. Um, we get directives and guidance from the state, from New York State Education Department. Um, and we try to the best of our ability to look at what those guidelines are. And then, um, when needed, adjust our plans accordingly. Um, as you are aware, um, we had town hall meetings over the last couple of weeks. We had a little bit of a stay in between because of the storms that happened. But, um, I'd like to say that we had over a thousand participants on those town hall meetings. Parents were great with the questions that they asked, whether it be an instructional question or a health and safety question. As you know, the team assembled a, a fact, uh, question and answer, um, a number of questions that are on our website that you could take a look at that were common questions that a lot of individuals were asking. They're on there. Um, and, and I really need you to make sure you take a look at our reopening plan, our mitigation plan, so you can get a clear understanding of what we're doing and the why behind, um, the hybrid model as also the remote model. And I think what's really important in our conversations were that we're giving parents an opportunity. If they're, they're not comfortable and they want their, their child to learn remotely, they can. If they feel comfortable in what we're doing from our mitigation instructional program, you know, we have that hybrid model. So, um, it's something that we look at every day that we're adjusting. We're having meetings. Um, and as of today, and again, things can change. We're looking forward to a, uh, transition period that'll take place on September 9th, 10th and 11th. Those will be half days where we'll begin to welcome our students in as well as continuing to get our staff and our, our, uh, teachers ready for what that, uh, the new, um, mitigations look like, health and safety, practices and protocols, um, as well as our instructional practices and getting them ready for a full implementation starting on Monday, September 14th. It's also important to look, because one of the questions that come, had us come up about, well, Mr. DeCarlo, what happens if we happen to have somebody who winds up testing positive for COVID? And in our plan, you will see we are going to be working closely with the Putnam County Department of Health. And they have clear guidelines and you will see in our plan, a, a clear flow chart of if this, then, and here's what happened. So please take a look at that. Anytime along the way, if you have any questions from an instructional point of view, um, they can be directed to our assistant superintendent Tremblay. Health and safety, um, and technology and connectivity can go to Dr. Stowell. And, and then questions that come up with HR for our teachers and staff, you know, uh, Ms. Legato, um, has been very much involved with that as we get ready for what that's going to look like. And then of course, um, our assistant superintendent Sandra Clohesi for issues with business and health and safety, because she works very closely with, uh, Michael Shaw, our facilities director. So again, I thank all of you for your patience, um, for your understanding. And as we go through this process, that it will evolve during the whole course of the 2021 school year. With that being said, we got an update yesterday from the governor. The governor's going to make a determine next week whether we have athletics in the fall or not. So those of you who are out there who are parents of students who are interested in participating in our fall, um, athletic, um, sports programs will know better next week. And then I'll follow up with you to let you know whether or not we're going to have a season in the fall or whether or not that's going to be postponed till January to next June, where they're looking at doing three seasons but within those months of January to June. But we'll know more about that as we go through. I want to thank the parents for submitting, um, your, your answers to the survey questions that were sent out there. And we're starting to really disaggregate that information on the total of number of students who are going to be, uh, remote. Students are going to be in the hybrid model. I know we've sent out the blue and gold days. I ask you to be a little bit more patient as we start to now look at class placements and what that looks like within the confines of that blue and gold, uh, schedule and who your teacher will be assigned to you, uh, for the 2021 school year. We continue to work on that. Transportation, um, is being worked on, um, very, very closely. And what I can say to you tonight, those of you who are out there, um, Ms. Lenore Volpe and of course Steve Truce are really working hard. We're not looking at, um, changing routes. So the route should be for the most part, the same as they were last year. And most importantly, having those same drivers who already know your kids, who have a relationship with you. Now, there may be a couple or two that might have retired and not be there. But for the most part, it'll be similar routes to last year as well as the same bus driver. So that's, that's, uh, that's something very, very important for you to understand. And last but not least, um, in order for this hybrid program to be successful, we're going to make sure that we have to, and, and, and I am really confident that our, that our students, especially secondary and even in our elementary, they want to come back to school. So in my heart of hearts, I think they're going to really work hard to make sure we follow those guidelines of social distancing and wearing masks. Those of you who have younger students, please start to get them in the habit of getting them to wear their mask, helping them put it on and take it off and allowing them to keep it on for an extended period of time as you're doing errands maybe around the house or you're going somewhere. Because the, the, the more we work together, that transition will be a lot easier. Please understand that there will be breaks during the course of the day to take those masks off. Um, they're not going to have to be on the, the entire six and a half hours a day. There will be breaks during the course of the day, um, for them to be able to take them off. But especially with the younger ones, please make sure you start to get them weaned into it so that they feel a little bit comfortable when they come in, um, to school. And again, um, back to, um, the fact that we're working hard. Um, we are hopeful that we're going to be able to start this hybrid model, um, come the middle part of September. And as you know, um, things can change. And the purpose behind that hybrid model is if for some reason the numbers go up, um, and I just want to reiterate this again, because this is really important. A lot of times people are looking on, um, the Putnam County Department of Health website and they're seeing our numbers. And right now it's actually 1% or below. But that's where we are in region four and region four is Westchester County, Rockland County, Putnam County, Ulster County and Orange County. Um, so it's important, um, because as you know, the governor said, you know, schools can reopen and they're safe to reopen if that number is below five. Right now we're at one. Um, if for some reason it starts to tick up and we get to that 9%, again, that might be the circuit breaker where the governor says everybody's back on remote. And that's why we have to be fluid in the 2021 school year, um, as we move forward. In speaking with the Department of Health, this is really important and, and Shauna Segal expressed this. It's important to get your flu shots as early as possible. It's going to be really, really important. So if you are someone who does get the flu shot as a family or as students, the earlier you get it, the better off you're going to be. Cause I'm sure you can imagine as we get into the flu season and then COVID, the more you are protected, the better off you, you may be. So that's really important. We're going to be working with the DOH. They're trying to work on some protocols to hopefully be able to come in like they normally do and give those shots to our staff and to our students. But we'll keep you updated on that during my, uh, my weekly, um, updates that I give you. So, um, President Mangan, thank you for giving me the time. Uh, again, I thank you as a community, the Board of Education for your confidence in us and, and what we've been doing as a group and you're listening and the community and, and, and your support has gone a long way. To be able to hear on town halls that we know, Mr. DeCarlo and your team, that this is something that, you know, you've never gone through before. And we thank you for your hard work and your, your, your thought process behind that. Um, and I think this is a partnership and there's no better school district to be able to work in and to see those partnerships that go on all the time. So I thank you very, very much on behalf of myself and my team, um, for all that you've been doing and being patient. And again, I know we'll get through this together. So back to you, President Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. Point well said. Um, I know that, I know what this community can do and I know that we're going to rally around, uh, our, our plan. Uh, remember it's a plan. But it's, uh, it's going to take all of us to pull this, uh, this miracle off. And, uh, I implore all the, all the parents and, uh, and guardians of the students, uh, just to continue to, you know, to grind and, and, and encourage our, you know, our children and our staff and, and, uh, and, and do what's, uh, and do what's right for our community. And, uh, and I think it was, uh, you know, I think it's been well said, well publicized in all the forums on the spotlights from Mr. DeCarlo. So, uh, you know, I really think we can do this. And as a community, we'll come together and we'll make this happen. So, uh, with that, I'd like to go towards, if I could, committee reports, um, uh, human resources. Lucy, do you have a, uh, I, I know we had a lengthy, uh, lengthy, uh, HR meeting, but do you have a, an overview of, uh, HR? Uh-oh. Lucy?
Lucy, you're muted.
Uh-oh.
Okay. My papers moved it how sensitive it was. Okay. So let me start all over. So the HR committee met on August 12th. Uh, we, uh, because it's human resources, we reviewed confidential, uh, human resource items in addition to, uh, the agenda items that are listed on, uh, agenda, which include, uh, as we met, Megan Sullivan, our administrator, uh, that's going to be starting in September and some other appointments and some leave of absences and also, uh, some coaching positions if sports does start up again. So that was pretty much the extent of HR. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, uh, uh, Lucy, Mr. or trustee, uh, for senior trustee on the, uh, on the school board. And thank you again. Can I go over to finance chairman, Ben Delulo? Ben?
Yeah. So, uh, also on August 12th, we, the finance and audit, uh, committee met. It was myself, uh, trustee Masafra and, uh, President Mangan. We discussed, uh, the transportation audit, which was, uh, uh, part of a non-instructural payroll audit that New York State does. We have not received the final audit report as of the 12th of Au- of August. Uh, but in, in, uh, in anticipation of, of that report, we are looking at installing some additional, um, uh, time, time, uh, timestamp, uh, software as well as some additional times, time sheet documentation that will be implemented, uh, being implemented now will be implemented as of September. We talked about the, uh, onboarding process for, uh, the new treasurer, which will start, she will start on September 1st. We met her at the last meeting. Her name is Lisa Zareski and she'll be starting September 1st. She'll basically being full immersion into the job duties, uh, ready to go in on jo- on day one. We also talked about the capital projects and, uh, um, I'm going to do, I think that the, the majority of the work that was done, uh, was complimented by the fact that we were, we were not on campus March through June. And the construction was actually started a little bit early and the weather was fairly good over the last few months. Uh, so the capital projects, uh, projects are on time and on budget. Uh, we'll probably have additional details, uh, to give a, let a future meeting, uh, to go further into the capital projects, the current ones and the ones in the future. But the roofing was done. And if I don't get this right to somebody, correct me, former road middle school, the high school roofs are done. And I know that, uh, uh, fall school, uh, is continuing to do some additional work. And that's, I think that's it.
That's great, Ben. Thank you very much. Yeah, I can, I can vouch for the, for the fall school roof. If whoever wanted to put a skating rink on, they would cut it down at the top of that roof, uh, for sure. So much for your report. And also a special thanks to, uh, Sandra Clohesi, our business manager, and also Mike Shaw and, uh, and the Palumbo Group, who, who's, has been, uh, who is our, uh, uh, he was our, uh, private, uh, outside consultant that's over, that's overseeing the projects. Those guys have worked well together and, uh, and we're really starting to see the benefits of, uh, of the work that the, um, that the community agreed to, uh, uh, last year. So thank you, uh, uh, thank you, community. And thank you, Mike, uh, Sandra, and, uh, uh, just a terrific job, of course, Mr. Uh, Mr. Uh, DeCarlo as well.
I got a point of inquiry, Mr. President, point of inquiry.
Yep.
Are these committee reports going to be put on the committee website, the, the tab on the website?
Yeah, we're going to accept the reports and then they'll be going on the tab on the website.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, uh, trustee McCracken. Okay. So I'm going to move right now towards the consent agenda. And for right now, I'd like to pull letter M out of the agenda. And could I get a motion to accept the consent agenda minus, uh, letter M?
So moved.
I think that was Adam. Second, Larry, all in favor? Thank you, Larry. I. Okay. Uh, Lucy, would you mind meeting, uh, read, excuse me, reading, uh, letter M from the consent agenda?
Sure. The Board of Education hereby accepts $2,175 from the middle school PTO for the purchase of four Lash Forge Adventure, three LTE 3D printers for the Mayapac Middle School. Thank you so much, the middle school PTO for your donation.
That's wonderful. And I have a, uh, can I have a motion to accept the donation from the Mayapac Middle School PTO? Lucy? Adam, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, middle school PTO. That's an extremely driven group and those 3D printers. I, I mean, we've seen the work, uh, been to the, uh, back to school nights and I hope we get there. But on the back to school nights, uh, I know that, uh, that the, uh, teachers over there are extremely passionate with our technology over there and these 3D printers, uh, uh, just get more people in the fold to be able to complete projects and, and show them off. It really is a fascinating thing. And, and the PTO is absolutely, uh, uh, be congratulated on, uh, on, on getting these printers for our, for our class. Wonderful.
I just want to say something.
Yep.
Trustee, uh, President Mangan, myself, you and Anthony and, uh, Anthony DeCarlo, superintendent, went to actually visit the middle school and we saw these 3D printers and we were totally blown away from it. And at that time, uh, we asked Anthony, uh, why couldn't we, uh, have this at the high school? And Superintendent, uh, DeCarlo, if you could comment on that, that we put these 3D printers over at the high school. So they continue the learning.
Yeah. So, um, uh, trustee Masafra, spot on, because in order to feed up to the high school with Project Lead the Way and doing some of this work, it's really, really important to have that continuity of instruction. And we made a commitment that we were going to start it in the middle school and then see it through to the next level up to the high school. So that's a very, very good point. And what's even more exciting is that next year, when we're doing the capital project, we're going to have a whole wing dedicated to, to the, to the, you know, to technology, science, math, that deals specifically with that. So it's, we're really moving in the right direction. And thank you for, uh, reiterating that to the public. It's very much appreciated.
Yeah, these are the things that we work very hard for and I appreciate that we're doing this for our students because this is what brings our kids to the next level and makes them stand apart when, uh, they do go out into the next step of life and university and work. So thank you.
Absolutely. And I'd also like to, and that's just one sample of, uh, of, you know, of what the, you know, boards at all the schools are doing. I know the elementary school is fully is active. Uh, so, uh, we were actually on a, a PTO council Zoom this morning. I was, uh, actually happy to be on. It's one of my favorite, uh, things to do, uh, each month is to get on the, uh, get on the program there and get on the, uh, the Zoom with our PTOs. And, uh, and it's one of those things where it, it's just unheralded. It's behind the scenes, but, uh, the, the work that goes into the PTOs and the passion, uh, that each of the PTOs has at all our schools is something that, uh, really the, uh, that we're, we really are indebted to the community and the volunteers that make that happen, to give our students the extra, the, the little extra things, the, uh, uh, the things that kind of take us to another level. And, uh, again, it's a big, uh, really a big shout out to all the PTOs and, uh, and a, and a huge thank you for all that you do for, for us, our students and our community. So, uh, thank you very much. Um, okay. So let's, uh, so we're going to move on to, um, uh, we have, uh, we have comments. We, uh, of, of course, we advertised, uh, uh, for the, um, for tonight. We have four, uh, comments that were sent in to our, um, uh, to our, uh, district clerk, Melody LaRaca. And Melody, I just wanted a quick shout out to you as well, uh, for putting our Zoom, uh, committee meetings together and getting us on the, on the cable channels and, and on the YouTube channel, uh, and all the things that you do, uh, behind the scenes and, uh, and out in front. You certainly juggle a lot of hats, uh, Melody. And we certainly are very, very, uh, happy to have you, uh, with us and, and, and just your passion that you bring to the job every day. I know I certainly enjoy working with you as, uh, as superintendent DeCarlo. So thank you for all you do in the board. Very happy to, uh, uh, to be working with you. So, uh, with that said, uh, we do have, we do have four comments that were sent in.
Can I just, um, ask a question real quick?
Go ahead.
Are these resident comments?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, these are resident comments.
Yeah, we, we have the, uh, comments and, um, and, uh, you know, we certainly enjoy, uh, all our resident comments. Um, you know, we like the participation. So what I'd like to do right now is I have, um, I have the comments. I kept the comments here. So what I'd like to do is now, so, uh, so there's a general theme with all four comments. And the theme is about, is around, um, uh, is around the, um, uh, the mascot, uh, the, uh, the M, uh, and our, and our nickname, um, the Indians. And we have four, uh, four, uh, questions, if you will, um, that, uh, that have been posed to the, uh, to the board this evening. And I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to, uh, to read the, uh, the, um, uh, the four questions that, uh, that I have in front of me right now. So I'll start off with, uh, with, uh, Daniel Aaron. Daniel, um, Daniel's a graduate of, uh, Mayapac High School. And, uh, uh, his question, uh, his question is, um, knowing that the Stockbridge Muncie Tribe, the very tribe, uh, uh, you claim, uh, to be honoring with the mascot feels disrespected and dehumanization instead of honor reflected in our mascot. How can you continue to validate that the symbol is appropriate for the Mayapac Central School District? Okay, that's a, that's, that's, that's one comment. Uh, let me just finish up because they're all the same, uh, the, uh, on the same topic. Uh, this is from Eric Bustey. Would the school board be, uh, open to deferring the deliberation and decision-making process around the mascot to a committee of indigenous people who have ancestral claim to this land, uh, if that is something they proposed? Okay, that's another, that's another comment right there. I have another one from, uh, from Jean Hopper. Jean is, uh, Jean is no stranger to us over here. Uh, very, uh, very committed, uh, uh, woman, uh, for our town. So, uh, her que- is, um, um, her question is why does the Mayapac Central School District, uh, feel that the Indian mascot honors the indigenous people? So, uh, again, these are, these are the questions. And then we have also a question from, uh, we have a question from Susan Schultz. And Susan Schultz writes, um, that she would like to know uh, what civil rights groups or human rights groups were notified, uh, with regards to, to our, uh, to our mascot? And what mental health expert did, uh, did the board consult with before making a decision in February not to change the mascot? So the, those are the, those are the comments that we have, uh, with regards to the mascot. So those are the, those are the comments that we have with regards to the mascot, which, which I will comment right now. So, so we know that it's not with regards to our mascot and our, and our, and the Indian nickname. I think, you know, obviously, what, what our, what our, what our priorities are right now, and not to say that this isn't a priority, but our priority right now is dealing with the pandemic, dealing with getting our, you know, I think we could all appreciate that, you know, our priorities are geared at this moment to the reopening, the health and safety of our, of our student staff and our community. This topic is very passionate. You're going to have people that are going to be on, on, on both sides. And we, and, and as a Board, we, we know that this topic is on our radar screen for, for 2021. You know, again, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon. And what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to focus our efforts on, and just on the reopening and, and then what we're, but again, on the radar screen for 2021 is a good, hard look at, at our educational component, the mascot, the nickname. And, you know, I'm looking forward to the, to the dialogue and, and an educational process on, onto both sides. So, um, so I think that's, that, I think that kind of sums up where we are with regards to, with regards to the mascot. The Board is looking at it. We're going to, again, it's on our radar screen, but please respect the fact that we've got to deal with, with reopening the school, the pandemic, getting, get our students and staff in and out of school safely, and then also our community. So that's where our focus is right now. We'll, we'll certainly be looking at this, you know, when, you know, when, if, you know, hopefully, we get a nice vaccine and, and a, and hopefully, we can get this done. So what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to make motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Lucy, can I have a second? Second?
Second.
I, I didn't hear it was Mike. Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Please, everybody stay safe, and please watch your Superintendent Spotlights and your, and everybody stay safe, and, and we'll, we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.